Any public discussion on any item on this agenda? Do you all need to do your thing and have to go somewhere or are you... Okay, I can move you up on that.
Sure.
Well, I can go with the limits and... I'm moving you step in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We have representatives here this morning from the state of Kentucky Energy. And I will there want to explain and discuss the project. I'll turn that over to whoever is the best of me thirty.
Okay.
I guess.
I think that would be me, but you can decide after if that's true or not. So for those of you who don't know me, because I've a couple of my own faces. Eleanor Byler, I'm the project manager on this specific project called Skeleton Creek. I can give a little bit of background on the project before we jump in, just that would be helpful. It's a 250 megawatt site, half in Garfield and essentially half in Garfield, half in Alphafa County. We're hoping construction starts in a couple of months and then we're operational by the end of the year 2019. We do have a customer, we have everything that we need. Going forward, we just need, you know, these kind of road use permits of the county. Make sure you guys are happy when we do start construction. This is Mike Lionheart, he's been working with some of your community leaders. Here's some of the schools, other members of the community to make sure that their needs are met as well. And then Terry Bryant is kind of just my guru on all things permitting. So we're here to discuss the road use maintenance committee. Terry has a couple of projects to pass out. We sent it to your county district attorney, Mr. Mitchell, and he approved it.
As to the form, excuse me?
As to the form, so it's... We want to just come here today and go over the form if you have any questions or other comments to make sure that, you know, what the county wants means captured. We can have an easy construction. So Terry's also going to hand out a site plan. So you can see what the project looks like. So we can really do this however you'd like, if you just want to ask some questions or take a minute to look over the forms or... So along with the form, there'll also be a haul route that we would provide that our engineers are still working on. That would be for the final, final version of this agreement. And one thing that we like to do is, you know, if you have a road supervisor or someone responsible for the county roads that we would like to drive with them, you know, our engineers taking down the haul route that we propose, so that's something additional.
That could be Marvin, it's all in his directory.
There are some discrepancies in form. There are places where it says sixty days and has thirty parentheses and a place where it says...
Yeah, it's small edits that will be cleaned.
We'll clean that up when we finalize it.
On this map, what's the difference in black and orange right now?
On the dots, there could be two things, I'm not sure which one is which, I mean like...
Just talking about...
Yeah. Yeah, it's technology.
Oh, I could have read it.
Read it, read it.
The yellows are a bit...
All I needed to do was read the map.
No, let me make it easy for you. The yellow ones are shorter, that's the difference. So I can talk a little bit about NextEra. We have fifteen operating projects in the state. We have three in Garfield County, so we've done enough work with them, we wanted to move some more new. So Alphafa, that would help you guys. We've been here now for over fifteen years in the state. Yeah, so I like to think, you know, we like, love, we love doing business here in Oklahoma, we want to keep doing it. It's been a great state for us to work in, so we just hope that we've been a great company for you guys to... I like to think of it as a marriage, right? If you can keep coming back, keep making it work, then it'll be a long lasting one relationship. Mike does a lot, if you want to talk about kind of what you do.
Yeah, so do the permitting or a lot of the permitting and then also community outreach. So for the schools, kind of identify sponsorship opportunities where we can help, you know, we can help with whatever the school needs, whether that be, for example, like Chromebooks for the school, for the elementary kids, or we're working right now trying to get, take a look at their scoreboards, because there's scoreboards at the perimeter of the school need to be replaced, so we're going to see if we can help out there. But we're really just trying to get within the community, you know, identify those opportunities where we can make an impact and also have NextEra be more of a recognizable name as well. So people, when they see that, they relate, they win project to what we're doing too. That's the biggest first for my part.
Keep things positive.
Keep things positive.
Things positive and then have a good recognition, you know, if we're going to come in here and we dig up your dirt and there's a lot of construction happening, you go, what's, what is this? At least then you can have a little idea of who we are and what we stand for and meet some of us.
Get in your contacts, put a case to them, so probably out there early enough.
Yep, and this project will actually have a pretty big impact. It'll be about, across the whole project, so not just Alphafa, but it'll be about sixty million dollars worth of property taxes and landowner payments. So to the individual people who are involved in the project, but also to the communities at work, right? So it's not necessarily just pinpointed impact. It's kind of what we get at with Mike as well, is, you know, the landowners benefit, the community benefits, and then people who aren't even involved in necessarily the local government or the project still benefit. So something I would like.
Is the power, the power lines, are they totally separate from you guys?
So this project will have a transmission line, an overhead transmission line. It'll also have a series of underground collection lines to gather the power. We will be building that transmission line. But it's not one of the, you know, the gigantic owned, utility owned, you know, full on that.
So the big line that they're talking about, ten and three, is totally separate?
Yeah, for this project, yeah.
Yep. Yep. The one that, you mean that spans the whole state? Yeah, that's not this project. We'll have one just, you know, like an extension cord. Little plug in, but okay. Though, yes, the substation's okay.
This agreement covers just the use of the roads because there will be semi trucks coming in with the big heavy equipment, the turbine components and the blades. And that will be the designated haul route. We will have an exhibit that shows what roads are going to be the haul route. Those roads will possibly need to be widened, improved, gravelled. Turning radiuses may need to be expanded in some locations. And in those locations, you know, they'll be in agreement with the adjoining landowner. And we'll designate that and we'll tell you that. And that's Eleanor talked about, the video, we'll do a pre-construction video of the roads before any work starts. And then after the work is done, we'll do a post-construction. If there are any areas that need improvement, they'll do the improvement. I believe there's also a provision in there that if the county wants to do the work, they could. I'll have to read that again, but I believe there is. So this exhibit does not cover the permits because there will be permits to the county, from the county, for the underground collection lines that will cross the county roads. And then there will be permits from the county for the overhead transmission line. No, the transmission line's going to come out of Garfield County. So there will be, need to be, in addition to regular county permit for the utility crossings under the road. And that's a separate piece of paper.
Yeah, like, like we've got on all of our other...
Exactly.
Utilities on that.
Exactly, exactly. We'll do the same process. This is just for the use of the roads and the use of the roads. This is to take care of your roads and make sure that you're happy when NextEra walks away, that you feel like your roads are at least as good a condition as they were in before construction started.
Or if you're not, then at least you have a number stock.
Well, I've talked to some other areas that have had this done and basically what they tell, what my understanding is, you hit with the commissioner and you pretty well satisfy the commissioner on what you do on bridges, culverts, pipes, or roads, the type of material. But do I understand that correctly? That's what I understand. Of course Marvin will be, he'll be our designated person, that's all in him.
He's mini being.
We will, we will take part in your round, you have a few different... If you want us to, we can put some more dots on it. If we get rid of the fly zone out here in the refuge, we'd be in good shape.
Yeah, that is an issue, that is an issue.
I don't see where, you know, like the type of material to put on the road where that's up to the county commissioner, am I overlooking that? I mean...
I do not know that this form specifies it.
Yeah, this one doesn't, that's, this is, you know, something that you want to specify.
Well, you know, as long as it's agreed upon the commissioner, you know...
Do you want the commissioner to approve the gravel?
Well, any, any material that's used, I mean, it has to be, don't you guys think that has to be...
I would say so, you know, like the difference in transfer, JF, I'd rather have life stone myself.
Yeah, and not big rock like gold field, yeah.
Yeah, and life stone would definitely be a better product to put on, as far as I'm concerned, but we do...
I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, just as long as it's agreed upon...
Okay.
On the materials.
Okay, I'm hearing that a lot. I guess the off-fog is using really micro...
Well, it's just kind of whatever they have.
Yeah.
And some of the time it'll never really work.
Yeah, definitely, it's a...
It's hard to main...
There's a lot better material than some of the oil companies have used in the past, I'll put it that way. Up in, up in my district, and I'm sure both of them are adept at the fact that they don't do a really good job of communicating either.
And then on, on the map, I see that Gold Three is, what's the black ones?
The project boundary, I would assume.
That's not, there's not going to be any in there.
No, no, that's just, the black one's just the boundary.
So Alphafa County has twenty-two?
Turbines? Roughly, yes. Twenty-two, twenty-three. I don't have the exact count.
Oh, driveway permits. I don't believe the county has a driveway permit, is that correct?
No, we don't. We provide an entrance to that property. We've got, we've got to provide one entrance to the property they own. Yeah, own one quarter section and that's just kind of what we follow. You've got, in other words, you've got to provide them a right of ingress and egress to their property.
And then it's depending whether you need a tin horn or no tin horn.
Yeah. Yeah, what you need in the way of water drainage.
Sometimes you need a tin horn, sometimes.
Right, right. So is that something that we'll work with Marvin on, on the driveway, the tin horn size?
Yeah. And then there again, there's material, you can put a lighter material in there, but it won't hold up.
Well, but NextEra's going to be using the road, so they'd be shooting themselves in the foot. So you use cheap material, you know?
Actually, up in District One, we don't put tin horns anymore, we use steel pipes. And it's much, much better than...
Even long term?
Long term, particularly, you're right. A tin horn doesn't last very long, it can get clacked on the end, you're steel pipe.
You can take those steel pipes out and clean it out and put them back.
Yeah, and you don't take a tin horn out without destroying it. If you do, it's your lucky day. That's what, for my personal deal, and I think Marvin will agree, that's the best route to go for that situation.
Okay.
Do you have a, I want to say a bridge or so, do you have a tonnage specification that you're going to go over that you go by or...
We, Nancy provided us with the Alphafa...
A bridge map?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Good.
John Holden is who's been building, he actually worked on this project over here in Woodward County. He's building projects for years and years. And that's his job, to design the haul route. And one of the first things he had me do was to get the bridge information for Alphafa and Garfield County.
Good.
Because we cannot come in on a bridge that won't bear the weight. And so that's the reason the haul route's not completed yet because John is evaluating and they work with GE, the turbines are with GE, built by GE. And they work with GE to design the haul route. And that's why we'll come back with an exhibit to tell you exactly where we're going to go and how we're going to go, so you will know what bridges we're crossing. But we've got the bridge, bridge weight limits, we're working on that, we're aware of that.
If the weight limit isn't sufficient for you, do you provide, do you put a new bridge in or do you...
I have no need to build a new bridge, but that's really expensive.
Oh, yeah.
I tell you, smiling when he asked us, yeah.
Yeah, the bridge is probably in your district, right?
No, not mine, I know where to cost to build bridges. Naturally, you're going to try to design a route that bypasses an insufficient bridge to get to where you're going.
We don't want any memorial bridges in this project, no.
Okay.
No, no.
He's already got one. Well, he'll soon for it.
One of these days, we're, we're going to get our, we're on the way, we've got our passing point now, after eight months, nine months.
So yes, bridges are a big concern. And, and, and yes, we're aware of that. And that's why we've got the professionals designing the haul route, and we don't have an exhibit for you today.
There, there again, you'll be working with Marvin on the wrong way, I shouldn't, but that's good.
And a question that came up before the meeting about decommissioning bonds? You want to talk about that?
So there are two kinds of ways that decommissioning is covered. One, in our lease with the landowner, we have a decommissioning clause. And two, they're all wind developers in the state of Oklahoma have to post a decommissioning bond in year five of the project. So that, you know, in case the project needs to be taken down, there's money there to do it. So if the company doesn't exist anymore, you're not just going to leave the infrastructure kind of place to hang along.
They're not?
No.
On that part of it, they're going to have to haul all that stuff back out they hauled in. They're not going to care about your bridge stuff at that point. They're not going to need the roads after they leave.
Well, the goal here would be, you know, in ninety years.
We're not going to be around to worry about it, nor will you.
So...
The bridges are going to be older by then, Teddy.
No, the county will be getting revenue from the wind farm and you can improve your bridges.
There you go.
This is Ibran Terry.
It's our job to look at the negative, right?
I understand, it's kind of on the same line as if they're banning their oil site. You've got the same regulations, similar regulations have to ban an oil site with corporation conditions and all that.
And you said you post the bond in year five, not prior to construction?
Um, no, I think it's year five, I can check on that.
Okay. And then insurance, and Nancy mentioned her sister was in the Birkenridge area. And she was wondering about insurance on projects, or if something happened to a turbine?
The, the, again, in the, the landowners, sorry, I'm trying to think of exactly what it says. There's a lot of landowners, there's a lot of different agreements. But the, the gist is that, yes, the turbines are covered, they're insured for, I think, at least a million dollars worth of damage, so the modifications, the improvements on the property are covered in their landowner agreement.
Any adjoining landowner would be made whole if there were any damage to it.
Exactly. Yeah, if you think about it like this, it's not good for us if the, if the equipment's damaged either, right? So it's a, it's a mutual bad problem, if that makes sense.
I can't remember what she said, if it hit the house, or almost hit the house, and this was a farmer, you know, or in that area. And we didn't tell us, she was, that would not be on it, I'm sure.
No.
The rumor is, they will need to fix it, the windmill now.
What? What language?
Rumor, rumor.
Rumor.
I don't know, I don't think so.
And, and you need to tell your sister, there's a mandatory setback for many occupied dwelling. What is it, twelve, thirteen?
Fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred feet, fourteen hundred feet. So that's a long way for a...
Yeah, like she said, the one, the closest one to ruin, so it's like a mile or something, but she listened to it.
So those blades are big and heavy, they're not going to go fourteen hundred, they, it, yeah.
They weren't sticking in there.
You hear, it wouldn't be a rumor, put it that way.
I probably had some pretty big winds, but...
That's why we're here.
You know, actually, I don't know if you remember, there was that big tornado that went down I-40 and hit El Reno a few years ago. And the MECO projects, one of the MECO projects comes right up close to I-40 and, and hit El Reno really badly. And the tornado, I watched it come through the turbines on my TV, I'm scared to death because I live not far from there. And then there's a blade on top of El Reno Votec there after the storm, and I'm just horrified, terrified. Well, it turned out that some turbine company had donated a blade to the Votec there in El Reno. Wow, because they have classes and the blade wasn't tied down. And so the tornado picked it up and it was on top of a building and it was not a NextEra turbine blade connected. But I was just like, oh no, there's a blade on top of, but it was...
Was that the F-five?
No, that was, it might have been the one, it was the one where those people were killed.
Yeah, it was an F-five.
So that's the only time I've ever heard of a blade being on a building, hitting a building.
Let's keep it that way.
It was during the tornado, a blade laying on the ground, didn't belong to the NextEra. So if you guys have an F-five tornado and any unsecured blades, no.
Probably what we're going to have to do is table this on the national meeting. I mean, we can approve, disapprove, or table the discuss, the project discussion, but we do not have it on there to sign the maintenance agreement today. So I would, I would move that we table this.
Right, you don't have to table anything, there's, there's not a discussion, I mean, there's not an agreement on there. So I would, you don't have to make, take any action on it, you just need to put it on the agenda whenever they're ready for it.
We've got to put it on the agenda next week to spell out this agreement before we can officially sign it.
Absolutely, that was our intention, so that was...
Well, well, I told me, I asked her exactly what she wanted on the agenda and she said just to discuss the project. Because I asked, do you want any agreement signed, and she said, no, they're discussing, discussing it, so...
Yep. Just wanted to get in front of you before we got in front of you to ask you to sign it.
So...
And then the goal would be, next time we come back, we'll have a haul route, we'll have, you know, the, at least a month out then, you know, dates, kind of all the, the other threadlines that the commissioner asked for, so...
So you don't want this agreement on there for next week then?
Maybe not this exact, like, down to the word count, but it would be this form.
I was like, do you want it on the agenda for next week? You said a month out, so...
Oh, no, no, not the...
Okay, so you don't want anything next week?
So we, we don't have to have it on the agenda to sign it next week?
No, it doesn't have to be next week. We have, we have a little bit of time, we need to iron out some details, add ins where some have said.
We just wanted to get it in front of you for you to look at and to know what's...
We studied it a little bit and see if we have...
Well, so we, I, we knew that you hadn't had a wind farm in the project yet, so I wanted to make sure that I wasn't just springing a form on you and forcing you to sign it. Got to have a starting point.
And, and we will submit a completed form with the exhibits to Nancy and the county clerk and the commissioners, who will you to get on the agenda when we're ready to get it signed.
Yeah, have them bring a business card over so you can contact me when things need to be on the agenda. That way I don't get a second hand, if that would hurt, it would...
Okay. Would you like me to email you or...
Yeah, my email address is on my, on my...
Your email address is on K County Records too also, right? That's how I get your phone number, I'll make a note to email you.
You don't want to, you got any further?
You want to collect the maps?
Oh, yeah, so, well, if you don't mind, I would like to take the maps back, just because they're not final yet. I wanted to show you something, but I'm still a bit tentative on the...
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, we'll continue on the agenda for hanging down the ninth brick spot construction.
Then you have a little bit of a balance on here, I mean, the payment is fine, but we did get that straightened out and we are right on the money with it now. They had applied one of those change orders to a payment, and we can't do that. And they had not adjusted it correctly on here. But the payment is the amount that they're wanting us to pay and then the balance that's right below... And then the balance that's right below is a little bit different, but they have got that corrected.
Yeah, thank you all.
Yeah, yes.
Did you need more than one?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. My number and Terry's, so if you need to reach either one of us, we should.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
So the current, current thing is due?
The payment, there's nothing wrong with the payment, the payment is, is perfect. They was just showing a little bit less money that we owed, and I guess it, it's in my mouth.
So we don't, we don't need to sign anything here, then?
No, we just need to prove it.
How move we approve it? I'll sort it. You know, what's the payment?
That payment is in here, there's two payments from last fiscal year.
Oh, my, this guy's just bothering me. So we just need to acknowledge this one and the other.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just another human on there. And then basically, all that's left on there is the retainer, and then we'll still have the, um, payment on one of the change orders. And then it should be done by the fifteenth of April, so it should be pretty good. That one is just another payment also.
Same thing, you have to acknowledge.
Thanks.
So we possibly haven't seen that baby?
No.
No.
I don't think they would want it.
I, yeah, I'm sure they didn't involve a police, though.
And then, my little grandbaby, she said, uh, put it in the mouth.
See this stuff?
I went and seen her Friday, so I didn't think that. Yes, birthday, twenty second. To you.
Uh, it's impossible. Sunday, yeah, Monday, Sunday. Because I was gonna have to build a kid myself, maybe, but.
There we go.
Fill in some part, and. And they keep us, that we, um, Zaden was upset because Jessica was not playing with him since he was born at Old Time. It was horrible. He was looking at me and said, oh, Jessica, the type is neat, okay.
Was she playing with?
She was playing with Tinsel. I know, that is, it's Jessica, not Tinsel.
That'll start a fight.
Yeah, it did. The Tinsel came up and made us orders that we all needed to go get in her tent, that was beside the table.
Of course she did.
Your tent will hold us all.
Of course she did. It's a bossy little kid, is what she is. She tells you what to do, and if you don't do it, she gets mad.
Yeah. And she will tell you. I'll, I'll save for the day, though, you got the golden round, she was happy to speak.
Played one of the baseball games, and when she was done talking, she just blew the window out. I was like, okay, cause we're done, bye.
I got an email back from Dobson, and we got their questions answered, so hopefully we're starting to get it.
Okay, good.
They wanted to know, questions that I had no idea how to answer, and they kept saying, well, ask your IT people. I don't know what to do. So I called SBI, and he answered them, and I just gave them SBI's number, cause I know they've done lots of work in my office, lots of work in Valerie's office. So he said that if they needed anything else, just to have them call us, so hopefully we're getting underway on that one.
Cool.
Les was out of the office, and he apologized, he was out of the office for two weeks. And he apologized, and we're getting back to seeing him, so.
Nothing moved real fast, did you?
I know, I know, that is very true.
Even me. Get more, I move slower every night. I kept running over myself.
What's, what is it supposed to start out with on Saturday?
Except Saturday night, too much, or Saturday afternoon, it'll be a chance to show us fifty percent. Ten to fifteen mile per hour wind, a high of fifty-three.
Give me Thursday, give me Thursday's. Give me Thursday's forecast while you're looking at it, will you? Thursday's the day.
Yeah, every time.
Thursday's the day I care about. I, I don't care any of that, I've seen it.
Just go through it.
High of fifty-three, low of thirty-four, twenty-five to thirty-five mile per hour winds.
On Thursday's, they're really what they're calling for?
I'm sorry, I'm a little off.
Thursday night, it's twenty to thirty. Gotta calm down.
That day will probably get canceled.
He's trying to put everybody on standby for like a good five days.
This is like the most-
Clear your calendar.
It's like the most ridiculous deal I ever got in here.
Are you meaning just moving Oklahoma, or?
No. They're moving that tower Thursday. They're gonna take that tower down, move all this in again.
Twenty-one, thirty-five mile per hour wind out here. I'm gonna sit across the street and just watch it take it down, put it up. Oh, I'm supposed to go softball Thursday, too.
I wouldn't, wouldn't leave if I had to, wouldn't challenge.
You can't take a helicopter to come in and just pick it up and carry it over.
Lady Kyle, that's good.
He was testing him, wasn't he?
Make sure I didn't miss it.
He's trading.
Gosh, Kyle, I'm gonna start wearing my shorts this week, get some suntan on my legs, I'm wearing a red leg weekend.
I started wearing my shorts.
I'm trying to change, I'm trying, I'm trying to change the county dress code.
We're doing a Tango here.
We really don't need to know about that, that could have missed me. I could think of better.
I've been wearing my shorts for months. That's someone, the commissioner, you know, gotta look professional. Right, all I like going for lunch, I put shorts on.
I got that boat, I'm not going to Lake, why Lake, just so.
Just try to spray tan.
That's what I mean.
You should have brought that, want that option, didn't you?
They need that to pull my drink, it's yours.
You don't want to run, but.
Really?
You don't want to go.
Tried to buy that big party bus.
Just, that's not what you need, right?
I could get a tobey, I'll say. If I bought it, I'd be there. You know, my brother and I got this thing, you know, we call Uncle Eddie, and, uh, you know, we're folks from Motorhome Christmas Vacation.
Yeah.
Well, Uncle Eddie, he's, he, I called him, yeah, he's a clerk, I said, hey, I'm buying me a party bus. He said, it won't fit in front of my house, Uncle Eddie.
I went to, went to a wedding one time, they had one of those buses, and like, they let the, they let those people go first, and then we rode on, the kids wanted to take a ride, so we rode with the kids, and that was a mistake, cause it was pretty nasty inside there after. You ever ride drinking now, but?
Had that lesson. Lot more fun than Jesus. I think I'm getting a haul right here, too. I'll be holding that shit.
I'm moving shit in the water for payment. All favors, aye.
Black and purple.
Four, it's four, my fourth.
Yeah, can you, you can do.
Jay, the top two are the sheriff, you don't sign those, the bottom ones are, that's for Tundra and Jet, sign those. I know, that's what they said, too. Well, kind of those words.
Yeah, I'm a bit hungry.
Don't send the top two.
Yeah, not that.
You have to acknowledge them all.
Yeah, I know, the top two you don't sign, the bottom ones you do, the rest for Tundra and Jet.
I'll make a version of the board for you.
He's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna hear. What's FEMA, who we got?
Oh, sorry, what's that?
If my son's wanting to know what FEMA, we got the new captain needs. At the first floor, Tucker's got a mobile, I got.
Really? You just now need a captain needs?
Oh, we replaced it before, but.
I don't know where to get them.
Well, I, I just assumed in the kingdom.
Is that around that third? He was filming, but he's out visiting, so.
I'll tell you off. I think, I think I'm gonna convert it over to regular right here. Bottom man.
Then you can get free ready for, that's what you get.
Well, there's some, they have to farm, I don't know even where they came from, years ago.
I hope I use the word free from the county.
There weren't a lot by.
I know what he's saying.
I like how there's a trap waiting to handle.
I'm just in one of those boots today, yes.
He's trying to get ready to say he can become the chairman.
I got a detective, Jay, you know.
He's gonna pay back your hail.
It's all the same, yeah?
That was, had to take it off, it's time. I'm gonna protect my children.
Oh, second.
All favors, aye.
Oh, my God.
Road crossing for me.
I'll take the post, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna have to do this thing, this. Had a lot of ink there.
We're a ditch for a twenty-four by eight building additionally, two predicted three.
Yeah.
Okay. So here's second, I'll second. Left most, left second to table it, all in favor, aye. Written quotes on the labor to move nine-one-one radio equipment antennas and hardware.
Okay, we've tried forever to get this deal together, nothing worked, nothing worked, this has been since like November.
We've had it on the agenda for times.
The last three times that I've been a member.
So, we're gonna issue POs for Ukraine, and issue a PO. Ukraine PO will go to Klein's home. And then there'll be a PO to Dustin Gerber for the tower work. And then, I don't know the name of Jason's company, three thousand. So. That way we supposedly can get that done Thursday before they pull our power generator and kick us off the building.
I'm moving executive.
All circuiting.
All favors.
Aye.
Aye.
You said before they pull the power for the generator?
They're getting ready to move the, the backup generators.
They said, they just pull the power for the generator? I'm just trying to write through different things at one time.
I'm still not following.
You said before they pull the power for the generator?
Yeah, before, before they pull our backup.
So we're gonna have a generator when they take it across the street. Declaration surplus for county court for scanner. I'm moving. That's the brother, do.
Oh, second.
Sure, brother. All favors, aye. About one, two, three resolutions for the closing of the court. One for county court, two for Dick, three.
That's an option, yeah?
I have to sign up here.
Oh, no, Marvellous.
On your county court, do you?
Uh, no.
No?
I'll sign up on this one.
You sign here?
Yeah.
I'm moving chapter resolutions.
It's like.
All in favor, aye. Start the review on the.
The third page is, what does it even, should we send the project, doesn't it come up? That is for the recording system.
Now, is this the deal that we're trying to request?
No, actually, I don't remember. I'm moving executive, that's all in favor. Cam Leach with Group Benefit Services Incorporated, uh, knows, nobody here, so.
He takes, I guess he sent an email Thursday, I did not see it, but I heard it was in the agenda. Um, he has not rescheduled, I don't know what the reason for.
He did take no action. County court threw up a bid for eating there again, some labor for a new building, for the new building for Allen.
I had, I sent the specs back to Rob to look at. To please look at and make sure that I do have or equivalent on any of the brands on there, I think I did, I had. Tom's look at them also, to make sure that I didn't leave anything out, 'cause we have a big sense to be on there, so. You guys will sign the top page. We have for there for three weeks, and then. They're gonna send it to Midwest Refrigeration in Enid, AC Services, and. Brettman's come across with it.
Do we need to sign there?
Gotta sign the, that top page anywhere.
Right there?
Yeah, anywhere, if it's on that award. So you guys have looked at the specs also?
I'm moving to go out on a bitch for the Allen.
I'll say.
All favors, aye. Any unforeseen business, move with yours.
I'll say that one.
All favors, aye.